All right, guys. Settle down. Excuse me. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting for Wayham Zonic Board of Appeal. It is Wednesday, February 26th, and it's 6:32 PM. We're at the room 520 Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. We're also online on Zoom. I want to call the meeting to order and make a roll call. By far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica DeBeneys. Our colleague Jim Kabachi, our assistant associate member, Mr. Connor Alden. Also, Mr. Christopher Conti, Richard Sample, myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khlasih, also present. Our Town Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, Assistant Town Planner, Mrs. Josh Flaherty, and Department Assistant Miss Raposo, Sonia. Before we start, Josh, you have something to do?
Yeah. I want to propose something that the board should adopt into their general conditions. This is in relation to certificates of occupancy. The first part of this would be if a project is near completion, to request a temporary certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall request the town consulting engineer to produce a report or a letter outlining outstanding requirements for the project to be considered substantially built. And additionally, the applicant shall produce a schedule of values that will be used to determine a bond amount for the remaining work that needs to be completed in accordance with the approved plans. And then this will help the zoning board determine eligibility for the temporary certificate of occupancy. And then we also go on to state it's important to note that the issuance of a temporary occupancy will be at the discretion of the building department to ensure compliance with the Building Code and life safety requirements. Furthermore, as recommended by the board, being the zoning board, the temporary certificate of occupancy will have a specified timeframe and financial conditions in terms of a bond to ensure that the project is completed satisfactorily. And then the second part of that, or what we will consider the final, is to request a actual certificate of occupancy, the applicant must request a letter from the town consulting engineer stating that the project has been substantially built per the approved plans and is eligible for a certificate of occupancy from the building department based on site improvements only with this board's approval. This request will require an ASBIL plan.
Okay. Any discussion on this thing?
So obviously, somebody spent some time writing that down. You didn't just come out of your head with that just now on spur of the moment?
At least far enough to print it out.
Is it your suggestion that this would be added to the instructions that are handed out at the time of an application?
This would be added to your general conditions upon approval.
General condition. So when we make an approval, you're suggesting that that sentence that you just read would be written into the approval?
That's correct.
That'll be included in the standard condition.
So when we say subject to and we say standard conditions?
That's what you got.
That'd be, that's an amendment to the existing standard conditions?
Yeah. And I would say this is no different than the board's already kind of been.
It's kind of what we've been doing, but you're trying to put it in writing.
We're memorializing it. Yep.
Those are my questions. Veronica?
So maybe this is already known, and I just don't know, but what's the remedy if, so we have the bond, they have occupancy, now they have people in and they're using the building, et cetera. What's the remedy if they don't comply and actually finish what they're supposed to finish?
The town can take the bond and finish the work for them.
And usually, the bond 150% of the value, so plenty of money. Connor, you have a question?
No, all right. I don't know.
Okay. Richard? Commissioner, you want to add something? I know you initiated that, so.
I'm good.
You're good with that? Okay. All right. That being said, let's move to the minutes of February 12th, 2025.
Well, do we want to?
Oh, yeah, we got to vote it in, sorry.
Do we want to vote or agree or accept or reject?
We'll take a vote.
Do we? So another question.
Go ahead.
Do we want to do that across the board, or do we want to limit it to projects of a certain size? You know?
These are usually with special permits, like site plan review, not somebody putting a deck.
Right. So it's just when there's a site plan review and there's a lot of?
Like the bank now.
Didn't your narrative kind of describe who this was going to in the beginning?
I don't, no, I don't really call out any type of project size or project description. What I would say is for almost all of your already approved projects, you require an ASBIL plan at the end anyway.
Any special permit site plan review would apply, like for instance, the bank, the 40B. Anything with site plan, it will apply.
I don't see any reason to.
So if it has a site plan, but all special permits don't have a site?
I mean, if you, sometimes special permit is an add-on roof. It won't comply. The commissioners are not. It doesn't have to be in, because you don't, you don't go for engineer if you add in a deck or addition, small addition, you know?
Just for classification to know and to limit.
We will go, when we grant with a site, with standard condition applies, apparently this doesn't apply, so it doesn't have to be. Unless the person obviously wants to do half of the deck for a bond, sure, why not? If, you know what I'm saying? Makes sense, right? Okay. That being said, guys, want to move to adopt this conditions?
So moved.
Somebody, we have a motion to adopt these conditions on the site plan and special permit?
Second.
Second by Richard. And all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
And myself, aye, 500. Okay. We're going to move to the minutes, sorry, minutes.
The minutes have been reviewed, and there's been, nobody's found anything to argue with, so therefore, I make a motion that we accept as presented.
Do I have a motion by Jim? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Veronica, you were here for the 12th, right, last week?
Yes.
Okay. Richard.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it carries. Thank you. We continue public hearing with Angela McEwen for 386 Main Street.
Good evening.
Hello, Counselor. Good evening.
We have new plans.
So, Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. We are here in front of you with the plans as requested from the last time we met with some of the revisions that the board members were looking for. I think I'll have Sam be able to go through those once you have a chance to open them up.
By the way, the public hearing is still open. We'll continue. Sam, first and last name, please.
Sam Iamelli, J.C. Engineering.
Let me. One second, guys. We got to be real quiet. Go ahead, Sam. First and last name.
Sam Iamelli, J.C. Engineering.
All right. Where were we?
So we had made a few plan changes with the items that were brought up by the chairman at the last meeting. Major changes, a few minor adjustments. I'd be happy to go through those changes and the items that were brought up at the last meeting.
All right. Which one, are you just to correct on the overhang, I was wrong?
So?
The commissioner cleared it up for me. You could overhang two feet. So you could do it at the foundation.
Yes.
So you're right on that one.
And we did slide those units a few inches in any case.
All right. So which one you were able to address, which one you couldn't?
I'll go through each one. So we talked about the setback there. Connecting the main building with underground utilities, no issue there. We've updated our utility plan to show that connection.
Yep.
Grading around the parking facility in that rim elevation, again, no issue. We were able to revisit that grading, minor adjustments, and raise that rim elevation up to.
That corner?
Yep.
All right. And landscaping, did you get a landscaping architect? We did before.
So, yes, I, we've, I've been talking with our landscape architect the last few days. I wasn't able to get a stamped plan for tonight's meeting, but happy to make that a condition. He was out of town, so we were able to get that in a short timeframe. But the only two minor updates you'd see on that plan is to incorporate the row of arborvitae's along the rear property line, which is already shown on the plan, but it would be incorporated into the landscape design. And we're also removing all of the trees along that stone wall, so we're going to be planting a few new ones roughly in that location as well.
Okay. On the, on the stone wall, you're going to have a structure engineer stamp the design?
Yep. So we did incorporate a detail in design on page nine for ready rock retaining wall, so we're calling for that stone wall to be removed and replaced. We've also updated grading plan with top and bottom elevations for reference along the wall.
What kind of, what kind of blocks you using? The precast?
The precast, ready rock ones, yep.
Well, you're gonna, I don't really, you're going to change kind of the ethics of Main Street. Somehow, we try to keep the aesthetics of it with the stone. I'd like to see the stone wall. We'll ask the board.
Are they the large block?
Yeah. They're.
Are they decorative fronts, or are they just plain concrete front?
They're concrete fronts.
Just like you have to see on the highway.
So it looks like a poured concrete wall in two-by-four-foot sections.
UT concrete blocks, essentially, yep. Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's skip this one. What else you have?
Going on to the drainage, we revisited our drainage design. Everything appears to check out. I confirmed with the review engineer. We went through site plan review.
We added the 10 by 10.
So, yes. And, yep, for the roof runoff, we're adding a, one leaching pit for the dry well there, connecting in the front five roof leaders into that one. There's already an existing concrete walkway up against the building on three sides, so we feel these five are easily accessible to get tied into this pit. And in any case, a good portion of that rear roof runoff is directed into, into the catch basins by surface water runoff.
All right. Just for the record, this one, Mr. Conti would be bought in on this because Veronica wasn't through the whole thing. But we start with question with Troy. Troy, what's your intake on that?
Well, I mean, I think my biggest thing is the wall.
So you like the stone wall, right? Like the walls, just to rebuild it?
Well, yeah, because, I mean, it would be consistent with what we did with the hospital, with the emergency room entrance.
Or anywhere on Main Street, yeah. It makes sense. Anything else?
No.
Veronica?
I don't have any comments.
Jimmy?
I'm good.
You're good?
Well, I'm good with everybody else's comments.
Yeah. Connor, you have a comment? You can input.
There I know.
You're good? Chris?
I didn't see like a row of arborvitae's towards High Street, where they planned to put a row of like arborvitae's there towards?
Along the road, no.
It'd be along the rear property line, shown on a.
Protection there?
At the top of the T, where our property, sort of the rear property line of our lot. It's on page three, the layout. That's going to be incorporated into the landscaping plan, but.
I saw the row of them on one plan, and then you had the landscaping plan, and they weren't on that, so it was going to be one of my questions is why they're not on that, but you're updating it.
Yes.
How about the stone wall, Chris?
I agree. I would rather see the stones rather than concrete.
Thank you. Richard?
Just had a concern when I'm looking over, if you look at the main building and you have where the blacktop's going, you have parking lot one, parking spot one, two, and three. They back up into the deck and stairs coming down. Is there any bollard or anything going to protect that from somebody backing right in and taking that right off the back of the house? If somebody's on that, somebody backs out and takes it off, and they fall down, I think there's a problem there, and maybe on the other set of stairs. I'm not so much on, on the, on, you're looking at the left-hand side one, but definitely where those parking spots are, where that deck is, and where that set of stairs comes down, you've got no protection there, just going right into it. Somebody's going to back into that and take that right out, I feel.
Yep. Yep. We could certainly consider putting some sort of barrier there. The parking width is 24 feet, which is required, but we can, we can certainly provide some barrier there.
And I, I would like to see stone on the wall myself.
No, that's a berm. That's a six-inch berm around the house, right?
No, it's only in a parking area. The rest of it's.
There's certain sections where we're berming to collect.
That's, that's the pavement. The berm is over here where it says there's an arrow points to where the berm is. Cape Cod berm doesn't go around all the way. That, the blue line is just your pavement. And your pavement goes right by the stairway.
Oh.
And you've got three parking spots. I could back right into that and take that right out. That's all my concern was on that.
Oh, so, let me ask you a question with, I'm going to ask our consultant, with the water, does, does it need, with the drainage, you need to have a berm to collect the water coming to those, to the catch basin? Don't you need a berm?
Right. And if you see, we have sort of a berm in the location of the catch basin, sort of on the edges and ends of the parking facility, which, you know, all the water's draining in that, those spots, it's the low section, and that berm behind it's going to help, help collect and direct the water.
Yeah. Okay. The water coming down that driveway, 319, 315, 31, is going to hit the building. It's not going to go around and go down to the, to the catch, no?
Where specifically?
Let's see, page, sheet five.
Yep.
Coming down the easement or whatever right away.
Mm-hmm.
And then you get your drainage, I mean, your road, pavement dip in, so it's going to hit that building. If there's no curb or Cape Cod berm, how's it going to divert to the catch basin?
We had a, we kind of had, showing the gutter lines there, sort of the low spot in the road, so it'd be higher up by the building, so you sort of have sort of a low spot.
So you're picking it up like 332?
Exact, 32, right at the edge of the, the concrete pad there.
All right. And I also like a stone wall. Guys want to ask Phil of everything, before we go for Jimmy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Phil's here. Oh, Phil's here. I'm looking for, I'm looking for you on Zoom.
I can go yell from the other room.
Well, just use your phone in the hall.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates. We've reviewed all of the drainage changes that have been made. Everything is accounted for, so we have no technical issues to raise. Sam and I did discuss a few times about the retaining wall along the front. One of the angles we were, we were pushing was to try and get some trees out there. Either keep the ones that are there, they're not able to do that, so they're going to replace them. We agree with you on the materiality of the wall, so we're glad to hear you say that. Of course, it really wants to be a stone wall out there, but technically speaking, everything is accounted for at this point.
Very well. So if we are to grant the permit or to approve, we could approve with the conditions only with the stamped, everything, with the stone wall and the stamped landscaping architect with the update, right?
That's correct. Everything else is accounted for, so those would be the only two plan-based conditions.
Again, Troy, you good with that?
I am.
Veronica?
I have a question without having to search this. Is the height of the wall going to change?
We're proposing to match what's existing there, so three to four and a half feet at most.
Question. So, the stone wall, I understand the applicant's desire to use pre, precast, preformed blocks. They're fast, they're easy, they're less expensive. A stone wall requires a stonemason. I still agree with the board that the look of the stone wall is far superior than raw concrete. But I've seen in construction the use of imitation stone or peel-and-stick stone, et cetera. I'm wondering, I'm saying, I'm asking the question kind of to my fellow board members, would there be any inclination to look at, if it's, if it's the, you know, they could use those blocks they want to use and then scratch coat it in brown and, and, no, and peel and those, those stones that stick, that's what the hospital did. Hospital poured the wall and then stuck the stone.
Poured it, yeah.
Poured it, and so.
Right. You could do that if you wish. You got to pour it.
I'm just saying, if that's, if that's financially to the applicant's advantage, I wouldn't, it's still going to look like a stone wall.
It's actually, believe it or not, it's more money.
Oh, okay. Well, I can run the bill up on anything.
Yeah. If you want to pour it with steel, reinforced steel, then veneer it. I mean, I did it on Main Street. I went with stone, it's cheaper to go with stone, straight stone.
Okay.
Unless, if your stones are small, you have to really enforce it in the back. I had big blocks, it worked. I don't know, he's, I don't know, the sun for, for you guys to decide.
It was just, it was a thought.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't have baddest stone, you're going to have to do Jim's theory because it won't hold. Anyone else? We go in public, want to, somebody want to speak in this matter? In or favor or against, or counsel from the other party?
We should be on Zoom.
Yes, ma'am?
We should be on Zoom.
Okay. Counselor Epstein, is it?
Silverstein.
Silverstein. Counselor, is he?
I don't know.
You expect a ma'am to go on, you expect him to be on Zoom?
Yeah, he's there. I'm letting him in now.
Okay. While we, while we wait for him, anyone else in the room want to speak on this matter? You can't speak without your counselor. You just got to.
I am here, Mr. Chair, just waiting to be admitted as a panelist. This is Jonathan Silverstein.
All right, Counselor. It's yours.
I'm not going to belabor the matter. The writing's on the wall. I guess I'll just make one final request for the board to consider how this project is going to impact the home that my clients have owned for, in their decade, in their family for decades, and their neighbors, and change the nature of their single-family residential neighborhood, and to encourage the board to give greater consideration to other options for access. But I know I'm not going to waste your time. You've, you've made your determination pretty clear, so I'll rest with that unless the board has any questions or thoughts that I can weigh in on.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we close, so the variance we're asking to, Counselor, the variance we're asking to separate the building, right? Any other lot coverage, anything else for variance? This is the only variance you're asking.
The variance we're voting on is?
To separate the building.
To separate the buildings.
Special permit, site plan review.
That's, yeah, but the variance, that's one. All right. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Just want to come forward, state your name, please.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, boy. Just state your name and address, ma'am.
Patricia Nelson, 181 High Street. I just have a question that I, from last week.
Yes.
And I guess I wanted this stated so that I am sure that I'm understanding you correctly. You said that you were voting on just the building plans themselves, not on the right-of-way. That was something that we would have to deal with. I want to be sure that I'm understanding what you're saying, that the, if you, if you vote to approve the building, you are not giving permission or saying you have the authority to let, to give them permission to build a road on our dirt driveway?
Correct. Whatever we grant is going to be for the lot. We're not discussing that right away. That becomes between the applicant and the neighbors in court. We're not, it is a very gray area, and none of us is capable of deciding on it. We're not attorneys or judges, but, so we're just leaving it if you are.
But you are, you do, you do have taken into account on past projects, the neighbors and the effect it's having on their property values, their way of life there.
We, we do. We do. And the zoning, that's the impact and the, and the amount of units and the town allow in that zoning.
Well, I understand that it's, but it's the access that, that the town is saying they have to have that is affecting our way of life.
We're not.
Our properties.
The town isn't saying they have to have it. They have the right to it.
They.
That's, that's, that's.
They're not saying.
Got nothing to do with zoning.
So they're not.
It's called a right-of-way. They have, they own a right-of-way.
Owned it for 90, almost 90 years.
There you go. So they, so that's not what this board is hearing. This board isn't, in, what's in front of us is, are the number of units they're proposing allowed under zoning? Do they need to be attached, or may they be detached? As far as how they get to and from the property, that's pre-existing.
But it seems to me that somewhere in the plans.
But, but is a big word. It's one of the biggest little words in the alphabet.
I'll delete it. It seems to me that in the plans and in the discussions that we've been here for, that it has been said they need to have a.
Consideration of, yeah, we, we put in arborvitae's, we decided.
No, on our lot, we did not.
You know, we, there was lots of things that the board in the site plan review did out of consideration to the abutters.
Did not want those.
But, and, and, and if you don't want them, you absolutely have the right to appeal the decision and stop everything and get it in Superior Court and then go, you know, but that's not what's in front of this board. That's the point. Everybody keeps wanting, this board got hung up for a month or more over the right-of-way, and, you know, it would be like, it's, it's not what's in front of us. But it keeps coming back. Your attorney, you are doing it now, it's.
But what we're saying is your requirement for this building is that they have access to.
No, we don't require them to have access. We require them to build, under the Building Code, we require them to meet the zoning bylaws, we require.
So theoretically, then, they could build this property and they could have no access to it if we go to court?
No, let's back up. Let's back up. Again, it's a black area, that's why you have an attorney, they have an attorney. That's why we're not saying you could pave it, you could cross over it, you cannot cross, you can use it, not, that's why we leave it alone. As far as we're concerned, we granted this plan. How they going to get their cars there? This is their problem.
Okay. So you're not saying that they have any kind of permission?
No, the town will not get, no way. We can't give it. We're not, we don't have the power to.
Disagreements to the right-of-way, pave it, widen it, anything?
No. It's like, we can give, grant something we don't have the power to.
Because, I mean.
If it was a town road, I guarantee you we can.
Right, right.
So we're not saying nothing about it, we're not discussing it. Let, let the lawyers deal with it, that both lawyers are capable, this is their, their thing.
Because our whole thing is that it's.
Correct.
Granted right-of-way for three, three houses, three residence.
Correct.
Residential buildings and not for a commercial enterprise, so.
Whatever the case, I, I hear what you're saying and like, that's, well, like I said, we're not getting into it.
Okay.
We, it's very gray and neither
I just wanted to be sure I was understanding what you were saying.
Yeah, I totally understand, and neither attorney was able to give us something solid, so they're gonna have to take care of each other, unfortunately. Anything, anyone else? I hear none, I can't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, counselor?
I'm sorry, just, um, if I could ask, um, for the board in its decision, just to be really clear, that the only relief it's granting, the only thing it's addressing is the use, uh, with respect to the detached multifamily and that, nothing about access or, um, anything else, any other aspect of the development is, um, intended to be addressed in the decision. I would appreciate that, just to make it crystal clear. You're, you're being really clear, you know, in what you're saying now, if I could just ask for the decision to clearly state that as well, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, counsel, like I said, we're not, even in that mention in our decision, that they could pave it or not pave it, but doing, whatever, we're not coming near it, counselor, before we close.
Um, the only thing I just wanna briefly remember again, because if this does go to appeal, we're here at a reconsideration of the petition. So if you recall, this, we went in front of planning board, this is why this has been quite some time. So we went in front of planning board who said that there was a substantial change, which based the, the negative determination. There was two of you who deterred, or deterred, um, who did not vote positively for this and it was based upon that easement issue, now you're taking the stand of, we're, we're dealing with the project, we're doing this, so I think it's pretty clear that you follow the proper procedure per the statute and per the code.
And Counselor Silverstein, for the record, Attorney Moore will be drafting the decision. She will pass it for you, for us, town council, everybody to review. If you have any comment, feel free to call the office or have Sonia give you my number or any board members to discuss. If you have a comment on it or through mail, she'll include us with all that, with the decision before we sign it. How's that, that sounds right?
Uh, that would be great, so, um, I'll get a copy of the draft decision at the same time, it'll be circulated and I'll have an opportunity to propose revisions, which of course, it's up to the board, I understand, to accept or not, but, um, that would be appreciated.
Correct, very good, and you will, in the, in the decision, counselor, you'll say it was appealed and all these things.
Yeah, I'll go through the, the timeline.
All right, for the, for the record also, uh, Mr. Sam, what's your last name?
Iameli.
Mr. Iameli is still under oath, so, uh, that being said, we're gonna move to close, can I have a motion to close?
Are we ready to close? I know that there were still items pending on the, um, engineering, are we, are we, are we?
Which, we have the stone wall and the final stamp for the landscaping, right?
So you're all got.
Yeah, this was addressed.
Everything there has been satisfied?
Yeah.
Can I just confer, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just conferred with my client too, that the stone wall, what you guys want, that's fine, that's, yeah.
But we're gonna make our decision, he's have to follow.
Right, I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're in agreement.
I move to close the public portion of this hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close, any discussion? I hear none, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it's closed, motions and wishes.
So we're gonna vote?
Let's go for the variance first.
To, that's, um, we're gonna vote to approve the variance that's been requested to put the units up as three separate buildings, we wanna call it four separate buildings, it's the main building that's existing plus three additional, how do you?
That's four, I believe.
Three buildings.
Plus three, okay.
Plus three, so the main building, existing plus three additional buildings to be erected and are variances that they need not be physically attached to each other.
All right, we have a motion to grant the variance by Mr. Akabachi about separating the buildings for three buildings and we believe that, with the board believe it meets such a requirement of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section ten. Any discussion on this, on this? Uh, now, the conditions have to come in right now before we go forward, so with the conditions discussion, who's got the conditions?
I make, I, I would seriously like to look, have the ballots put by the deck in the stairway on that one side of the building.
All right, we have first condition to install six ballots behind the parking number one, two, three, to protect the deck. Six inch, four inch, filled with concrete, what do you want, which, what do you suggest, whatever structure you sound.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it gaudy, but I wanna protect it.
Four inch filled concrete or six inch, six of them along the deck, behind parking one, two, three.
Opposite one, two, three, yep.
I wanna vote, look, the, can we, can you look at, can you, just show me our pages, yeah. He's waiting to bring them back.
Right, right here.
We'll vote these people back and out here, and this way.
That's too far.
Too far, okay.
Yeah, twenty and twenty-four, another ten, that's fifty, there's twenty-four. Okay, so these, the first condition, second condition, that the wall will be constructed by natural stone wall, the facade will have to be stone wall, so whether you build concrete like Mr. Akabachi says and you veneer it or you bring a big block stone and do it, but the final product has to be stone wall. And with the footing, in this matter, stone will not work with footing, so you're gonna have to design for them some footing with steel to base it, unless you bring big blocks. If you do big blocks, stone, it will work, but if you're gonna be near it, it's gonna have a design structure wall behind it, like twelve inch with steel and all that. So that's the second condition, and third condition also, you have to come up with a certified plan with a landscape and architect.
Yep.
All right, any other conditions? Board member, associate can enter if you like, no, Veronica. Counselor, I mean, Commissioner, anything would you like to add in this, just so we make sure everything's good?
I'm, I'm all set.
Josh?
All set.
All right, so these are the conditions, that's the motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
On the variance, so the va, I'll say, second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
Abstain, myself, Grant, so you have four zero, four one, uh, four zero one, and Richard, Mr. Richard Sample abstain. So that's for the variance, on the special permit, I would recommend again, sorry, we put the condition on the variance, that's okay, we could use them. Same conditions on the special permit and the site plan. Can we get a motion on that?
Yeah, so moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Akabachi to grant, as discussed with all the condition and as presented, on last plans revised on or when you revised those plans?
February nineteenth.
February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So, uh, by J.C. Engineering with the same conditions for the variance. Any other discussion on the site plan review and special permit? Hear none, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Mr. Troy Larson?
Aye.
Jim Akabachi?
Aye.
Christopher Conti?
Aye.
Richard Sample?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir Kalasi, aye. Just for the record, on the variance, also the same la, as we stated, the names now with last names, it's the same person. Just trying to be some, as legal as we can. You good to go? Congrats after three years.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, thank you, Sam. Counselor, counselor, but what we discussed about the easement, that we have nothing to do with that. You gotta enter it in your, in your decision because we promised Attorney Simpson. I know we didn't, you're right, okay, yeah. I know we didn't, uh, like, kinda vote on it, but that's what we want, thank you.
You wanna take that home with you?
You guys turned yours in, right? I looked at them enough online.
You seen them enough?
I can see them online, that's why.
I got a new computer, so I can pull right up, man.
This one we just finished. He's seen enough of them.
So, a second, variance.
What do you wanna do for the next one?
Forty-four twenty-four, can I get the plans, the package?
Sixty-six twenty-four.
Uh, fifty-four twenty-four.
Fifty-four twenty-four.
But next one is fifty-four twenty-four.
All right, very well, uh, we'll continue with the continue public hearing, fifty-four dash twenty-four, Yusuf Enterprises. Yes, sir, somebody here for Yusuf Enterprise, two eight 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 Cranberry Highway.
Okay, just take the whole pack, and I don't think anybody, if I need it, I'll grab it back from here.
That's, uh, that's the addition behind the apartment building?
No, this way, right now is a garage on Cranberry Highway across from Stop and Shop, the car wash, they turning it to a garage. That, you talking about the apartments?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is last, so a couple more hearings, so about twenty minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, sir, name and address, please.
Uh, sure, uh, my name is Bob Rego, I'm with Riverhawk Environmental with a civil engineer for the project, and I live at, uh, three twenty-six Glen Charlie Road in Lehrhan.
We can't hear a word.
Hang, hang on a minute.
We can't hear a word you're saying.
One, uh, Speaker, would you try talking again so we can?
Yes, is that any better or?
Oh, that's getting a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to talk as loud as possible and hopefully you can hear me properly. My name's Bob Rego, I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, civil engineer for the project. I live at, uh, three twenty-six Glen Charlie Road in Lehrhan. Is that audible or?
Yes, this is good, and, uh, like I said, I'm recusing myself for this matter, but, as I recall, just helping the board out, last time you were still left to bring the approval from the fire department, did you do this?
Uh, yes, we, we got approval today, he signed off in the, uh, online portal, Captain Smith, and he had no further comment. Then he, uh, called and left me a voicemail that, um, he was all set with everything.
All right, Richard, I mean, Phil, Phil, can you please give us, Phil, give the board clean bill of healths on that?
What's Glen Charlie Road, what's his address?
His office.
Okay.
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, the only comment outstanding
It's your name, Phil.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil Cudero, Allen and Major Associates, the only comment outstanding was getting the, the letter from the fire department. Uh, I wasn't aware that they had uploaded it to the portal, so we've not seen it, so I'm looking at it real time with you. Uh, obviously, if the fire department is fine with it, that was the last matter that they had to address.
All right.
So it's, it's digitally available, but it's not in the folder, correct?
It was just uploaded today.
Okay, okay, that's all right. It's on the record that it's there digitally.
Why don't you continue this, because I get refused myself?
Okay. So with, knowing that, or believing that the, the letter from the fire department is now out of the file and that was the only remaining thing, all we really need now, we, we've closed the public portion of this or not? Do we ever close?
You didn't, you did not.
Right now, we need, we need to move to closing, any further discussion from the public? Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Troy Larson has moved that we closed the public portion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Sample, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, so we've closed the public portion of this, and all we need now is a motion to grant as requested, for plans provided.
Just for the record, you granting five, four, variance for the highway for the taken?
Right.
And the site plan, uh, uh, site plan review, what we should do in two sections.
So, yeah. Somebody wanna make a motion to accept the variance for the five feet on the front?
So moved.
Okay, and is it seconded?
Second.
Okay, moved by Richard, seconded by Troy, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sorry for not using last names. Okay, uh, variance. Five, zero. Uh, four zero zero, sorry. And now, the, um, site plan per do we have that plan somewhere? The plan dated what?
This is January twenty-third.
The plan dated January twenty-third. Somebody wanna make that motion? So moved. That's January twenty-third, twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, it doesn't have a day.
One twenty-three.
Oh, uh, there's another date, sorry. So that was issued for permitting construction on January twenty-twenty-three, the year of, then the date is actually January twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four.
So the last revised is one twenty-two, twenty-four. Site plan, per plan revised, one twenty-two, twenty-four. Who's got that motion?
I'm sorry to interrupt, if I may, the, the portal plans are dated January thirty, twenty-twenty-five, just to capture the latest ones.
One thirty, twenty-five, thank you. That was the date I was looking for, and all I need now is a motion to approve that site plan.
So moved.
Moved by Richard, seconded by
Second.
By Mr. Conti, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And you're abstaining, correct, or you're recusing, so it's a four-person vote and we got four zero zero.
All right, it carries, very well.
Carry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move forward, sixty-six dash twenty-four, Taunton Federal Credit Union.
Sorry, about this?
Yeah.
Name spelling is different from the application than the plans.
Yusuf Enterprises?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
No, it's not spelled the same, Y-O-U-S-S-E-F Enterprises on the plans and U-S-S-E-F Enterprises on the application.
The application is right, U, U.
So this needs to be corrected, I think.
These are preliminary plans.
Well, whatever plans we have, because there's not gonna be a match if somebody goes to look these up.
Let me, uh, the site plan, look at the site plan.
Hand, yes, let's have that.
This is, I don't have the updated one that, uh, was noted from twenty-twenty-five, but that's.
This is Y-O-U and the one
Yeah, they brought it into the board, they brought the updated plans.
This one says U-S-S-E-F Enterprises.
That's correct, right?
That is the correct.
And that's the date we're going by.
Right.
The ones online, January thirtieth, are correct.
Oh, okay.
Let me, let me clear things out, we're here for the site plan, not for the, this is just a looking of plan.
Uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the name.
That's like preliminary plan, when they come with the real plan, like structural with the commissioner, it's up to them to have the name right. I'm, I'm sure the bank is gonna say, I want the right name, but we approving the site plan, not a building, just the looks of the building, not a structure or nothing.
Yeah, as long as the site plan matches, whatever they, yeah.
I mean, you guys approved just the looks, and like I said, for the record, uh, I had the owner approach me to build it for him and we talked about it, and that's why I recused myself, I didn't take the job, but he approached me, so it's only fair to do it this way. So we're gonna move to Federal Credit Union, public hearing still open, name and address, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Nelson Tavarez, President and CEO, Taunton Federal Credit Union, fourteen Church Green, Taunton, Massachusetts.
Okay, where, where we left it last time and what's still missing?
Uh, yes, sir, just for a matter of status update, uh, as of last meeting, we were in possession of peer review number one. Uh, we responded to that peer review, uh, since we've received peer review number two from Mr. Phil Cudera and we've been in verbal communication with him regarding his, um, additional handful of findings that still remain. Uh, we've actually opened up a communication plan between he, our engineer, and ourselves, uh, to help remediate the remaining items. Um, so we would anticipate that coming to our, our next hearing, uh, we would be hopefully in compliance with all of his findings, so we request the continuance.
Very well, uh, board members, uh, questions, Troy?
No questions.
Veronica?
None.
So we're gonna continue for two weeks, which would put us into March twelve.
That would be our preference, yes.
One, two?
One, two.
Do you have a question for now for gentlemen, Jimmy?
I have no questions.
Honor.
No, thank you.
Chris?
I'm all set, thanks.
Richard?
No, no, just time.
Anyone in the public for, against this project? Hear none, so can we get a motion to continue?
So moved.
We have a motion by Jim, Mr. Akabachi, to continue, merit sixty-six dash twenty-four, Taunton Federal Credit Union, two five one two Cranberry Highway till March twelve, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sample, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Uh, Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, so we'll see you on March twelve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, I wanna take a discussion out of order for Mr. Patrick Cook for the, on behalf of Mr. Richard Hadley at three one oh four Cranberry Highway.
Okay.
For, uh, just because have a seat, that project with the apartments, it's a long discussion. have a seat. That project with the apartments, it's a long discussion. These are short one. We're taking them out of order so he doesn't have to sit and wait. All right, name and address, sir.
Good evening. Attorney Patrick Cook. I'm an attorney out of Middleborough, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Mr. Richard Hadley and his interest in 3104 Cranberry Highway.
Okay.
I have-
Are you presenting?
I would like to.
If, if I may, before, before you start, counselor, what, what brings you to us? What does the board has to do with it?
Fair question. So Mr. Hadley's property at 3104 Cranberry Highway, as you know, directly abuts a significant project going in Woodland Cove, which is going in behind him, basically all around him. And he is, to be candid, he's struggling with the, what's happening with drainage and water coming onto his, his property. And he's, he's unable to, to manage it and it's damaging his property. And what we wanted to do, and we appreciate the time here today, because you guys clearly have a lot going on, but to, to share with you what's happening on his property so you can see it and that, so that when, as that project goes forward and as they're back in front of you again, this can be something that is hopefully part of your discussion with them and part of the, the list of items that they can take on prior to the project being granted occupancy or being finished. As much, you know, he's been a longstanding member of the community, as I'm sure that you guys are aware. And there was no issues with standing water or flooding on the property prior to the initiation of the grading that's happened with the Woodland Cove project. Since that, there was some, you know, there was some initial challenges with the state did some improvements out front. But to be candid, once we engaged with them and once going through their process, they were fantastic. And they, they addressed that and there's been no issues again with flooding or standing water on his property. So this is a concern to him. I just started working with him on this literally a day and a half ago. So we have not engaged with the Woodland Cove project people, ourselves, but we will look to do so. But we just wanted to, again, appreciate your time to capture what's happening and to show you quickly what's happening with the project there.
All right.
Better for context, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and
Point of order.
Yeah.
Just wanna stop you for a minute. When applicants come in front of us, we hear testimony. We ask questions and then we get to a point where we say, is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this matter? At that point, the applicant is present or their counsel is present. At this point, we're having a discussion and we're taking testimony and the applicant is not present and their counsel is not present.
So what's your point of order?
My, my point of order is, should this be heard during a-
Or not?
Or not. Should we actually be discussing this without the applicant having been previously notified and have the opportunity to be part of this discussion?
All right, okay, very well. All right, we have a point of order. Point of order by Mr. Akabachi heard the reason. Do I have a motion on accepting this point of order? We have, we have to have a motion. Either we're accepting it, we go forward, or we stop right here. So point of order, do I have a second on that point of order? A second on the point of order?
Nobody's second.
I hear none. I mean, it's lost. Continue, sir.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Jim.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So just quick reference point here for what we're looking at. Mr. 3104 Cranberry Highway is this property here. The 3102, the Woodland Cove project is essentially surrounding him. What I'm gonna show you are images from, and a, and a brief video of this angle coming down here and looking back here. The building we're gonna mainly look at is this building right here and another small structure here. So we'll see pictures looking out this way and we'll see, we'll see images looking this way, okay? So this is looking down at that building from the Woodland Cove angle. I said this, so this was some initial, the gr- you can see here the grading coming down onto his, towards 3104 Cranberry Highway. And we have a, a structure here that looks like it was intended to collect, to capture some water moving through. But that's, that's a look there. Looking from that property back out, this is when it was first graded. This is the building I showed you that we would be looking along, that's looking back up the street. And we can see here again, the slope of the angle coming down. And this was right after the grading was, was put in. Here, we see the same, pretty close to the same angle. And this is a, a beginning of some rainfall. Wasn't heavy yet, but we can already see water moving down and water starting to come this way and pool here. This is pretty close to a similar angle. Now we can see water where it's running down here, pooling here and starting to, to move this way further onto his property. Okay? This video I'm gonna show you is pretty close to that same angle, more along in this same, same water event. And we can see here and the water coming in and collecting on the property, running down here. And we can actually see the water moving onto his property. So there's significant water here. Certainly he, his issue is to handle the water that's on his property. But we can actually see, you know, that falls onto his property. But we can actually see the water moving onto his property in a significant amount. And what that causes to happen here is again, not, there was no movement of water, no standing water, no flooding on the property before. And now we have, and you can actually see the amount of water that's running. So if you recall prior, there was a larger area that pooled that when it built up, put pressure on, created that initial movement down on his property. And now we have actually running water coming in and, and causing flooding events on his, on 3104 Cranberry Highway. Okay? Camera works a little rough here. I, I won't throw that stone because I didn't do it and it'd probably be worse if I did. But what we're gonna end up with here, just a few seconds, is a look up-
Got another minute, sir.
Yep, I'll, I won't even need it. A look up to this part. There. And if we stop right here, we can see again, this is a collection, water meeting coming down from that one angle, pooling here and also coming down from the other side of this building. Okay? And now we can look and see in the background here, again, you can see that the water's running onto here from that side of his property also. And you can look at the grading, how it's coming down. So no question that they're smart people working on that project. No question that they're looking to do the right thing and to get that done. Not speaking to any of that, all I'm saying is that Mr., I think Mr. Hadley has some reasonable concerns about what's, what the, the present outcome is of the movement of water in that, in that project on his property. And we appreciate your awareness to it, your sensitivity to it. So as that project looks to go forward, that this is the time, saves him for having to litigate it and spend that comment money, when we can hopefully work, you know, through this process to, to make sure that this is addressed then.
Okay, I'm sure we will. But I got a point for you that the biggest problem, I know the state addressed that water, that contained that water, but the state built basically a wall in front of that property four feet high, causing it to be a, a hole and, and a hole. Prior, are you from the area, sir?
I'm, I'm, again, I'm familiar by literature, but I've been familiar with this property for years. I remember before that, I remember before the state did that. But that's why I, I wanted to share with you that the state stepped up and owned that. And after that work, there wasn't an issue until this grading happened.
But you're missing my point. I know they onto the problem, but they built the wall in front of him. I lived here for forty years. Many of us here have been here all their lives. This road, that, with that curve, the state did that U-turn, whatever you call it, cul-de-sac, it was four feet lower than it is. They built it up. So it's actually-
The time comes, right?
The water used to come from the back or, because originally that back was high as it is. It was never like- The Woodlands Cove, the name of it? Woodlands Cove. They didn't build it up. They just actually graded it down. So, but the water used to run on the highway and there, there used to be a culvert there on the right. And for some reason, it disappeared. I don't know what happened to it. So we will take personally, I'll, I'll run it by the board. I personally will take into consideration when they come for occupancy, we'll ask our town consultant to look at it. But if it's not something to do with their fault, I think you, I personally think your biggest problem is the state. But I'll, I'll run it by the board. Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any comment right now.
Um, I think, I do think that they have some responsibility.
Okay.
And the other thing I would say is hopefully you'll speak with them prior to them even getting their occupancy and it's not, it's not even gonna be an issue because it will be resolved.
I agree. And as I said, I just recently engaged and, and I, I have some correspondence, just almost done writing to them. So reach out. And again, I wanted to make sure that I, I noted that, that this isn't, I'm not implying that they haven't engaged or wouldn't engage. So I have, I have high hopes that that's the outcome.
Okay, Jimmy?
I hope, hope that when they come for their final, that you guys have resolved this and it's not even part of our discussion. That's what I would hope. Whether, whether the state engineering with the turnaround-
It's not gonna solve the-
Contributed or didn't contribute?
It doesn't matter what they do. It's not gonna solve it. You need onsite drainage system. You are in a hole.
But he shouldn't own the water coming on. The water coming on isn't his issue. That, that should be solved before that. That's, so that's our-
We will, like I said, we'll wait to hear from our consultant before final. We see if, if any water come from them. But just for you, this is not gonna solve your problem for your client. Connor, do you have a question or comment on this matter?
Uh, just mirror what Veronica said, that you would just have to see-
Right.
Who reaches out from the apartment complex.
All right, very good. Richard?
My thoughts, he didn't have flooding before and now he has flooding, whether it's the state or whether them, but somebody's gonna-
Right.
Seems like the water's coming from their property, not the state. So if they can do something about it and-
Right.
Remedy it, that, that would be the best thing.
Right, okay.
You guys have been fantastic. Thank you for taking us on a busy evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Now it's Christmas. Two twenty-five Neighborhood Works Solution, 40B Comprehensive Permit, two 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 zero, Cranberry Highway.
This is a new one. It has to be read, correct?
There you go, buddy. Thank you. All right.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on February 26th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number two dash twenty-five for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B for solution for Neighborhood Housing Services of South Shore, Inc., doing business as Neighbor Works Housing Solutions, seeking to redevelop the rear portion of land with one multifamily apartment building containing forty one-bedroom units for seniors located at 2220 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. This would appear on Wareham Assessors Map 103 Lot 1015A in the Strip Commercial Zoning District.
Very well. Thank you for coming. I need names and addresses for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney from Dennis. Do you need full street address?
Yeah, for the record, just that time.
All right, 26 Upper County Road, Dennis, Dennisport.
All right, sir.
My name's Cameron Campbell. I'm with DeSalle Bercala, the civil engineers for the site. And we're based out of Quincy, 1266 Furness Brook Parkway.
Okay, sir.
Rob Corley. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions, 422 Washington Street, Quincy, Mass.
Sir?
Joe Haskett, Principal at Union Architects, 160 Mathewson Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
All right, thank you. Just the two engineer, I'm gonna have you guys one and stand up. Jimmy, do you mind?
So-
You're gonna testify for the project, not the counselors or the owner, just the two engineer? Please.
Reason you're right. Here, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
All right, please, have a seat. All right, that being said, it's your counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna have a, a series of presentations for you this evening and we do have slide deck. Wanted to start with Mr. Corley, who is the CEO of Neighbor Works, as he mentioned. And then we were gonna go from there to engineering. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Haskett for the architecture buildings. And then I was going to, I'll come back and discuss a little bit more about the 40B process, which I know you've dealt with before, the waiver requests. And the plans that you have before you, they were between the time of filing and the time of tonight, the building was reduced a little bit in size. And so the plans set that you have before you are the revised plans that were previously submitted to Sonia in the office. And that is what the architect and the engineer will go over. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Corley.
Question?
Yes.
Did the number of units change?
No, no, the building just, and they'll be discussed by Mr. Haskett, but no, it got a little smaller, but still forty one-bedroom units. No change to that.
After the, the gentleman, you're gonna go through Safe Harbor, through Selectment, through housing, all these approvals you have, right?
Yes, and we have, we have some letters of support already and yes, we can discuss some of that. Yes, absolutely.
Sir?
Thank you.
It's your-
So, good evening, members of the board. My name's Rob Corley. As I mentioned before, I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. We're a nonprofit housing development corporation that's been in business for over forty years, working primarily in southern Massachusetts. This particular property, we merged with South Shore Housing, which was the former owner of the property about five years ago, and became the new owners of, of this property over the last five years, the existing property. And there's a large track of land in the rear of the property that we're hoping to redevelop into senior, housing for seniors. And in the past ten years or so, we've been developing similar buildings in other communities in and around Wareham for this exact population, similar style building of approximately 600 square feet per unit. The need for senior housing has grown substantially in Massachusetts and for housing generally. This would be a state-funded project that we would hope to develop over the next couple of years. And as, as we've been developing this housing over the last thirty, forty years, we have a portfolio of over a thousand units. And we also administer several other programs here in Wareham, including Raft, Homebase, Down Payment Assistance for First-Time Homebuyers, Get the Let Out Programs for Existing Landlords and Tenants, and a variety of other services here in the community. We've been operating here in Wareham with those services for quite some time, again, over fifteen to twenty years. And the parcel that's there now consists of some family units, twenty-four. And we feel like this is a great opportunity to bring some senior housing to the community. And we're excited to present the project for you tonight.
Okay, very well. Any other input, engineers, you wanna speak on the project?
Yeah. Do we have-
Yeah.
Presentation?
We gave it to the gentleman there.
Do you have your laptop? We can certainly do that if you give us one, one minute. You have a presentation.
Well, while he prepares, when you mean senior, is it sixty-five and older?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two and older?
Sixty-two and older, correct.
Okay, I didn't have a chance to look at the plans. That one-story plan, like, just like the Wareham Housing, just like the floor?
Looks like multi-story.
It's three, it's a three-story building.
Oh, there's elevators and stuff.
And we have, yes, there'll be elevators. We have all the floor plans. And maybe as, while that is being set up, Mr. Chairman, I could discuss a little bit about the 40B just to start and then I'll break off. We are here before you. We obtained a project eligibility letter from the state on December 19th. And this is a project that the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities approved the project under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And it is for the forty units. These forty units will help raise Wareham's subsidized housing inventory percentage from seven point- from seven point four to approximately seven point eight percent, uh, getting closer to the ten percent goal. And the project has been designed in, uh, keeping with the goals of the twenty-twenty-two housing production plan from the, that the town has produced. There is in your file, a letter of support and endorsement from the select board, uh, which Chair you referred to before. There is also a letter in the file, um, of support from the, uh, Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. So the, we have been before those boards. We also have met with town staff, um, and others, uh, working through the development of the plans that we're gonna present to you tonight. And, uh, the, this is senior housing. As, as Mr. Corley mentioned, the, the four buildings in the front of the property are family housing with the twenty-four units. So this in the back will be compatible as senior housing. And it is in, um, support of the, um, uh, the Wareham Housing Assessment and Production Plan from twenty-twenty-two mentions a desire for a variety of housing, affordable housing opportunities specifically for the elderly. That is a principal goal. And this is a project that will, um, meet that, that need for providing, uh, some senior housing in the, in the community. A minimum of twenty-five percent of the units will be deed restricted as, um, affordable at the eighty percent of area median income, uh, which is done for both complying with both state requirements and financing requirements. However, um, if the applicant can, their goal is to hope to be able to further restrict the property. And they would like to, uh, provide at least twenty percent or eight of the apartments at thirty percent AMI and eighty percent or thirty-two of the apartments at sixty percent AMI. So, um, no matter what the percentage is, it's a hundred percent affordable project. Uh, it'll either be all at the eighty or some will be deeper. But there are no market rate units.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Uh, this development. It is one hundred percent affordable, um, to meet state guidelines and rules and requirements. And we will be entering into a affordable housing restriction, you know, attesting to that. There's one on the, there's one for the existing housing and it'll be amended. It'll be a new one for the housing in the back. And with that.
Yeah, a quick question. You guys bought what's there and combine them or you go on and venture with them?
It's one parcel, it's one parcel, the, the applicant is the owner.
Right.
They own and operate the front, they own the whole thing.
Okay.
And they'll, they will be operating both.
That'd be okay. So you, you'll be doing the vouchers and all that or whatever it's got, uh, I mean, qualifying the tenants and all this.
That's correct.
South Shore Housing, right?
That's correct. We have a professional management company that would be in place. And, um, it's a three-story building and the existing buildings are three stories. And only thing I'll add is that there's an existing large, um, garage maintenance building already located where this building will be put at the rear of the site. There's a basketball court and an existing maintenance garage that we'd be raising.
Uh, just, I'm sure that the neighbor's gonna have a concern about this. So senior, a couple or one person, he or she, whatever, uh, they'll be occupying, there'll be no children. I assume it's a one-bedroom.
That's correct.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, sir, it's yours.
So, so.
Go ahead.
On the building that you're gonna tear down, that was for maintenance on-site or maintenance for the authority overall?
Yeah, good, good question. So it, it was originally intended to be for overall use and it's been barely used over the last fifteen, twenty years. It's somewhat.
It's obsolete. It's functionally obsolete. You're gonna eliminate it.
Better said, yes. Yeah.
And we'll show that on the site plans where you'll see it shortly.
Okay.
All right, with that, we'll, if we could turn over to the engineer to start.
Thank you. So as you can see, the site, that's the existing conditions. The four buildings out front, there's six units each. And you can see the garage they were talking about in the rear. To the left of the garage is the existing septic system for the development, for the existing development. And there's exterior parking to the. There's exterior parking all along there, along the building. There's forty-nine spaces.
Yeah.
Which is seven more than required. And the asphalt actually wraps around the building and there's a twelve-foot wide, uh, emergency aisle to drive along the back of the building. It currently doesn't meet the fire code, which is twenty feet wide. But we've had discussions with the fire department and they wanna leave it as-is.
Yeah.
To be able to use it.
Right.
So I can go on to the next. There it is, there it is. So that's kind of a zoomed-in of the project area. It's just the rear of the site and there's the garage that's gonna be taken down. And all the green to the right is a wooded area that we're planning on developing.
Okay.
This is kind of a construction. So this is the proposed layout. You can see the new building at the rear.
Yeah.
And that we're proposing two new exterior parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
The front is seventeen spaces with handicap parkings. And then the far right is twenty-six spaces for a total of forty-three. The zoning is one space per unit, so forty, so we have three additional spaces.
One per, because of senior, right?
Yeah, one, yeah, one per unit because of the senior, yeah.
Right.
So we have three additional spaces along with the seven additional spaces at the front. And we've also talked with the management company to figure out if there was any sort of parking issue on-site now. And they've said they've had no issue. There's, there's plenty of parking.
Right.
The, we're gonna extend the existing driveway and you can either turn left into the front or loop around the building at a drop-off location or one-way. Or you can go out to the right and go to the rear parking.
Can you, can you hold your point?
Yeah.
Which show us exactly how you're going in.
So you'll come in off of where.
What's existing?
From what's existing, yeah.
Same curb.
You'll drive through the parking, the existing parking area.
Right.
And you'll come, either you'll come in and you'll go left to the front.
Yeah.
Front parking or go up to the right to the rear parking.
Yeah.
And there's also a drop-off area that loops around in the front. Where there's a landscaped island with a gazebo. Uh, the parking's been designed to meet all the requirements, twenty-four-foot aisle with tobacco.
Right.
Uh, there are twenty-two foot wide, or no, twenty-foot wide aisles to meet the fire code.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a, if you see, there's a retaining wall at the rear here.
Yeah.
Actually a grasscrete drive aisle around the building.
Yeah.
For fire access. We've discussed it with the fire department. They've approved it. They had one minor comment, which was, uh, increase the radius at the inner circle here, which we've done. It was twenty, they wanted twenty-five.
The radius, that's, that's only twenty feet?
It was a twenty-foot radius for the curve.
Oh, oh, okay.
And they wanted it a twenty-five-foot interior radius. So we give them a little bit more room to turn. And we've increased it as requested.
And they accepted that, twenty-five?
Uh, I don't know if they've fully, they, they asked for the twenty-five. They, but we, I don't know if they've commented on the revised.
What's the diameter of that cul-de-sac in the center?
Uh, it's kind of an oblong shape.
Right.
But it's, you got twenty-foot radiuses coming in, twenty-five, and then a twenty-foot radius coming out. And it's twenty feet wide of pavement. It's not particularly designed for the ladder truck to get through. It's more for if an ambulance has to pull up to the front door or for drop-off deliveries, the ladder truck can pull up to the front and go to the left, up to the front, go to the right. It can stop here. And then if it has to, it can drive around the building. But it can also, we've also designed, I have maneuvering plans that I can show you.
Yeah, we're gonna have to see that. And you use the ladder one, Wareham ladder one?
Yeah, yeah. They sent me the specifications.
Spikes, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the layout.
The septic.
That's the septic.
Sir, let me ask you a question. The, where is the entrance of that building? That little?
It comes in right here, right at.
Do you have like a parking for ambulance, for unloading packages, grocery?
That loop is made, it's a one-way loop and it's made to.
Yeah, but it's only twenty feet wide.
Yeah, so it's made to stop, drop off and keep moving.
Well, what happened if there's an ambulance standing there for an hour and a half?
I would hope the ambulance isn't at the site for an hour and a half, but, uh.
Most of, sometimes it could be even ten minutes. What are you gonna do with the traffic? Ambulance is good twelve feet wide.
Well, the traffic can still move around the site. They can turn around in the parking areas and move around. That's just for the front of the building, which, and there's walkways throughout the site where you can walk into the front of the building if you have to. Or there's other side entrances, uh, here. And there's another front entrance here. Sorry, my hands shaking on that.
I understand, but it should, it should be, they should be, but it's gonna be forty tenants. I'm sure most of the groceries are gonna be delivered. Most of the package is gonna be delivered.
So.
And I'm sure unfortunately ambulance gonna go there.
Yeah.
So these utility trucks or vans, whatever you call them, they're gonna be able to park without disturbing the flow of the traffic.
Yeah. So a twenty-foot wide aisle allows one car to be pulled over and one car to get around.
Yeah, I know, but.
The typical aisle is a ten-foot wide.
No, no, well, that's not what I'm asking you. I'm asking you, you're gonna have to create spot for it. I'm, I'm not giving, twenty feet is not gonna cut it with these, the thing. You're gonna, I'm sure this isn't gonna get solved tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something you have to go back, get the drawing board and figure out whether you're gonna have a good space for these vehicles to park.
Yeah.
It won't, it'll be a problem, trust me, in the future. I don't know. I'm not telling you what to do, but.
Yeah.
I build projects. I know how it works.
One of our goals tonight is to get your initial feedback.
Exactly, exactly.
Before we're continued. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
There's a little more zoomed-in look at the design. And the yellow area on the right is the proposed, the new proposed septic system strictly for this building. So they'll be two separate.
And, and where's the septic for the existing buildings?
Uh, if I can go back.
Oh, back?
It's to the left. It's right in here.
Okay.
It's a mounted system and it's pumped.
How many, how many bedroom on that one on the left?
On the left, that is.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah, it's.
Forty-eight bedrooms?
It's about a four-thousand gallon septic system. And then the new one will be forty-four hundred. So we're staying.
So you don't need a discharge?
No, we're staying underneath the ten-thousand.
All right, so you don't need, okay, all right, very good. Uh, are you doing a denite system?
Uh, not proposed at the moment. We haven't submitted to Board of Health yet.
Okay.
Right now it's.
Is there any wetland in the surrounding area close?
Uh, there is a small one here at the corner.
Is it within five hundred feet?
Uh, I would say the hundred-foot buffer is right here.
All right, so yeah, you're gonna need it. Within five hundred, you're gonna need it.
A denitrification?
Yeah, that's the rules in Wareham.
All right, so yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that with the Board of Health.
That, you deal with this with the Board of Health, just to give you a heads up. All right, so keep going.
So that is a more zoomed-in. And then we can go into the.
That corner, the inside corner of the building, just for the future.
Yeah.
Right there, like, you know, maybe you could do.
Right here?
Like spa right here. You get plenty of room to study when you go to your office, whenever, tomorrow, next week, whatever. All right, keep going.
So here's the grading. It's, we're gonna lift the site up because the septic system has to be lifted. So we're gonna blend it with the building.
So these are slab-on-grades, I assume?
It's a slab-on-grade building, yeah. And then you can see there's actually, we're replacing the maintenance building right there. It's a much smaller maintenance building than what's there now, but it's what's requested by the management company.
Yeah, plows, landscape and all that.
Yeah, exactly.
How, how much you raise on the site?
I believe it's about four feet.
Four feet, okay.
Just in the rear.
And where's the trash?
At the.
Yeah, where is your trash dumpsters going?
So the dumpster is right here off to the right. So you, they'll be able to pull in, pick it up and back out and turn around.
Okay, that thing, you have, you have it enclosed, right?
Yes, it'll be enclosed, yeah, on a, on a concrete slab enclosed.
And it's one, one trap, one site for both the existing twenty-four and the forty-B and.
No, no, the front has its own dumpster.
And where's that?
Uh, I can run back to the.
Sorry.
Front is on the side, middle of the parking lot, I think.
It's right here.
Yeah, right there, yeah, middle of the parking lot. Okay. All right, very well.
So we'll run through, just do a quick overview of the utilities. Uh, we're extending the existing utilities on-site. There's already a six-inch water main that comes up the rear of the existing buildings. There's a fire hydrant. We plan to extend it to the building with a six-inch fire line and a forge.
Do a model yet?
Uh, we have not done the, they haven't done the fire design yet.
All right. I did, there's plenty, I think there's plenty pressure there, but you're gonna need that model.
Yeah.
All right.
There'll be a four-inch domestic. Uh, there's gas already on-site running along the back of the building. There's gonna be an emergency generator and a transformer. We kinda show them preliminary locations right there.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the gas will be brought to the generator. Uh, the electric is already on-site. Couple utility poles run down the edge of the existing parking lot to a utility pole behind the existing buildings.
So the, the existing parking lot, you're gonna go on the edge of it?
So the.
The part, the new poles?
So there, there's already poles. There's.
How far they go in?
There's a couple poles that come here and then there's one pole at the back of the building right there.
And where are you gonna go underground from there?
So we're gonna come down off that pole in the rear and go to the, to the transformer.
Underground.
Underground, yeah.
All right, just for the, also the, the dumpster, make sure it's a cinder block walls, not plastic because they're not less.
Yeah.
With a wire, uh, fence door, like heavy-duty door.
Yeah.
Not those ones that break after a week. Okay.
So then the proposed drainage, uh, we have three subsurface systems. The system to the right, that's to collect the parking lot area over there.
Yeah.
There's a system in the rear, that's for a portion of the roof. There's a system in the front, that's for a portion of the roof. And then there's an existing infiltration basin on-site at this location. And we're gonna rework it to collect this asphalt and infiltrate it. We're infiltrating the hundred-year storm for all of the entire site. So there's really no outlets off of the site. And so they're pretty well-sized infiltration systems. They're the concrete chambers. Uh, we've done, I've done soil testing out there for the septic system.
Yeah.
The groundwater was a little bit higher. That's why the site's also raised. But it's a nice sandy soil. And there's really no water issues on-site at the moment.
We're gonna get to you, sir. Just give us a minute, five minutes. Let them finish. We'll get, okay? We, everybody will have a chance to speak. All right.
I believe that's all I really have to cover. If you wanna go over to.
Go to the building, we'll go through the building.
Oh, wait, I can do the maneuvering.
Yeah, let's do the building quick with the architect.
I can run through the maneuvering quick. But it just shows, that's the fire engine going up and going around. Go to the next one. Okay, that's just showing it going around the opposite direction.
Okay.
And then this one shows it going up, turning around the existing building. And then also going to the end and then doing a three-point turn to back out so that they don't have to drive around the building.
Yeah.
Now I can go to the architect.
All right, very well.
Thanks, Cam. Good evening again. My name is Joe Haskett, Union Architects. Thank you again for your time this evening. I'm gonna try and be as concise as possible and run through the slides and obviously take any questions if we need to tab back. This particular image shows the three-story building. Uh, as Cam had talked about, this is the sidewalk from the existing building. We're trying to align it to run into the, uh, kind of align with our entrance, our main entrance to the building. There's a small porch here, uh, for people to sit outside. Again, three stories, forty units. Uh, and this also starts to show how you can, how you can circle around. We'll also take a look at the width of that. Uh, this is the first floor plan. Uh, the key points to point out here are, this is the main entry. The kind of the pink color starts to show common amenity space. Uh, there's supportive offices here for administration. Main entry, some sitting areas, a wellness room, uh, a multipurpose room. And then this starts to, um, along the L here, starts to form, um, our units. And we have three types of units here. Actually, let me just show you the second floor. She again starts to show again our unit types. Uh, again, three types, a double-loaded corridor, fully sprinkled, um. And here again, we show our units. This one here, type A, we have twenty-seven. Type B, we have nine. And then the CBH units, uh, we are proposing four.
What's your square footage, the minimum on each?
So it's a great question. It's one of the reasons that we're, we're here tonight. Um, for Wareham, uh, it's requested to have a six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot unit.
That's excluding hallways and bathrooms.
Correct. And this.
Our waiver request is exactly that.
So one of the things we're seeking here is for this unit here, this one is six-hundred-and-forty-five square feet, which is inclusive of mechanical closets. And then this unit here is six-hundred-and-forty-five. And this unit is six-hundred-and-sixty-five, the CBH unit.
In, including.
Inclusive.
Including the.
Including the closets.
Spaces.
Yes, correct. And so one of the things I do wanna point out is we are showing, if you can see the dash lines throughout the, through the, through the, uh, bathrooms, in the bedrooms, the clearances around the kitchens, that will all meet, uh, it will be fully accessible and meet all ADA guidelines. And that was.
So you, they're gonna be, how many handicap units you have?
We have, the type A are all adaptive. We have, the type A are all adaptable. We have four CBH units, which are, which are even more, they give more ample space, the community-based housing, more than ADA.
It's adaptable, but do you have actual...
These units, four of them.
You have four?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to run through again quickly, these are, these are the elevations. Some of the materials are gonna be, it's all kind of a vernacular style in terms of aesthetics. We have a cornice line at the top. We have, we're proposing clabbard siding throughout with...
What kind of siding?
Clabbard, like cement board siding?
Clabbard, cement, the hardy board?
Yeah, mhm, the hardy board, yep. And then just showing you all the elevations. This is the side elevation, sorry, this is the rear elevation, side elevation. Sections, again, just kind of showing you size and height.
How many elevators, you have, one?
We have two. For senior, it's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities requests to have two for senior housing. This starts to show an aerial view. Again, this is the, the front townhouse units. This is starting to show the porch that wraps around, three stories, flat roof. Entrance here, side entrance over here for this parking lot, and then an entrance over here for this parking lot.
Because that shed on there, that's your, on that parking lot, there's like a little shed.
That's a, that's an old, it's been moved since then, yeah.
All right.
And, Joe, that's your...
Yeah, I'm complete, yep.
You said, you from Quincy, you said?
I'm, I'm from Quincy.
Oh, okay. That's Quincy-style building. I did few buildings there, there's a lot of them like that, anyway.
So I'm bringing it back to me just a couple minutes, I know, appreciate your time, I know it's getting a little bit late, so I just wanted to run through quickly some of the requirements under, under Chapter 40B, that what you're looking at. I did provide, provided to you a summary of reasoning which spells this out. With, you're serving, as you know, in the stead of all local boards, for local bylaws. Boards of Health, if there's a state bylaw, you still have to go there for, for a requirement. And what you're look, what the board looks at, the legal standard here, unlike a special permit and a variance, is, is the proposed development consistent with local needs? That's the threshold, the balancing test that the board looks at under Chapter 40B for, for these developments. It is also another difference, as I'm sure you know, is you only need a majority vote, whereas for 40A zoning, you need a supermajority vote. So it's a little bit different when you, when you're looking under 40B. I won't go through all the reasons, but in the summary, I set forth why we believe that the project is consistent with local needs. Most importantly, because it is meeting the intents and purposes of the Housing Production Plan and the Housing Needs Assessment for Wareham, and the interest of providing very necessary senior housing. And, and, you know, one-bedrooms, as was discussed, and the, in neighborworks, other projects, and this gets just to the parking spaces with the 43 spaces, which is itself more than one-to-one, but they also find that generally speaking, when you're in the 62 and above crowd, they tend to have only about 50% or so of their residents who will probably have cars. So even though there's more than one-to-one, there's gonna be, it's probably almost overparked, but it, but it's, there's plenty of room for if friends, relatives, nurses, you know, whoever might be coming to, to assist, there will be plenty of parking for that. The, a traffic study was prepared and has been submitted to you, and just like to read the, the, "Traffic Impact Evaluation concluded that the redevelopment can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure in a safe and efficient manner." And so we did submit that as well to you. For all the reasons both Cameron and Joe mentioned about, you know, the stormwater treatment, the wastewater treatment, the utilities, the sprinkling of the building, fire hydrants, all of that, we believe that this project is consistent with local needs, will not be detrimental to, to any off-site properties, and we think it'll be very compatible for the site. Now, that being said, as with any 40B, the reason why you come under 40B is because all projects are gonna need some waivers, which you are granted, authorized to grant under 40B. They're not zoning variances, you don't have to find the three criteria of Chapter 40A, Section 10, but you do have to find that, when you balance the local needs of the project, that waiving them is something that is necessary and helps to allow the project to be economic, economically feasible, and therefore to be consistent. So on page, we gave you this in the application as a separate sheet, but also on page seven of the summary, I just wanted to run through the waivers, and those are the ones that you will ultimately be considering. And I know there'll be questions, I just wanted to put them into the record testifying to, and then we can discuss them. The first waiver is under Sections 340.4 and 823.1 of the zoning bylaw, which is the minimum lot size, minimum unit size, I apologize. So, as we have already discussed, you're supposed to have 650 square feet of livable floor space, exclusive of closets and bathrooms. As you heard, and we can discuss more, the proposed sizes would be less than that, inclusive of those. But again, recognizing that this is senior 62-plus housing. We have also requested a waiver from Section 623 for lot area in frontage in the CS zoning district to allow 40 units, because the density would not otherwise be allowed without the waiver. Section 763.3, requesting a waiver from the one tree per 10 cars within the new parking lot aisles and islands. There is landscaping, but it does not meet that, that standard.
So what are you, what are you proposing? No trees?
We, we, we're, they're in the process of still hiring a landscape architect, so there hasn't been a full-on landscaping plan done yet. But there will be one submitted to you guys before final approval.
It'd be nice to have some shade for the cars.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and we're not asking for none, it was just not able to meet the one per 10.
There won't be islands, per se, you'll have the exterior being landscaped.
If I stop you, so between the cars, there's no island?
No.
Can you, can we go...
Comfortable, nobody, not too many vendor, vendor be there?
Between the cars, it's just, they're your typical 9-by-18 parking space, or what, it might be bigger than...
919.
919 for Wareham, yeah. So it's a typical parking space with the painted lines.
Oh, after this.
And they're all vertical, there's no real conflicting movements, it's just, you pull in and you back out.
And as you can see on there, the spaces, they're not back-to-back spaces. So there will be landscaping along the perimeters of that, but the, the bylaw is talking about within, you know, so it's talking about actual traffic islands in the parking lot.
I believe if it's, the parking lot's over 25 spaces, you need one tree for every 10 cars, you need to split it up.
Our consultant will bring this up for us.
Yes.
And we'll see what we get from there.
Absolutely, and...
Alternate, what is it, G account? 53G account, yeah?
Yes, and we've actually, part of that's been funded already, I think we need to give a little bit more, but $4,000 has been submitted to the 53G account. We do understand this peer review, and I believe the engineer may still be in the room. So that's wonderful, I'm glad he's here. So just wrapping up on the waivers, minimum lot size, if it's determined to be needed, the number of dwelling units and apartments. The landscape buffer size, only on the north there, where the retaining wall goes close to the property line for the fire lane, that one area needs a requested waiver for the buffer. We talked about landscaping, and then provision of the performance maintenance bond or the agreement. So those are, just to put them on the record, the waivers that we are requesting, and I'm sure we will have more conversation tonight and afterwards. With that, we appreciate your time, we look forward to your questions, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Would love to talk with you more, but I'm sure the neighbors want to speak, so we try to, I'm sure we'll talk more.
Yes, absolutely.
Before we go forward, we start by the board, Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any questions.
Any question right now you want to lay out there?
Nope.
Veronica.
I'm seeing that you're getting rid of the basketball court. I think that that needs to be maybe redone somewhere else or something.
Yeah, we plan on adding more amenities on the backside near the fire lane that's existing, so sort of shifting that over, there's a little play area there now. And for the existing properties, we're actually doing some significant improvements around the buildings for the, for the children in particular.
And that, the actual, the 12-foot fire lane that's on the rear, we're taking off eight feet of that and making that grasscrete, so it's more green space in the back, and leaving a four-foot walkway. That way, the truck, the fire truck can still drive on it, but it gives you a little bit more green space than having all asphalt back there.
When we met with the existing residents, that was a concern for the children in particular.
Oh, so you did meet with them, and that's good to know.
Yeah, and tried to... And we figured out a plan that we think is even better, and some of the existing infrastructure there for the kids and the families isn't, isn't the best, so this is gonna be a major upgrade for them as well.
Good, that's good.
And one thing I forgot, we forgot to mention as well, is right now, there is going to be a, the office, for lack of a better term, which is in the front, is going to be relocated to this building and will be serving the entire property. So it's also gonna be increased service capacity for the existing residents as well.
What'll happen to the old office?
The laundry room area there, that it butts, would be increased a little bit for the existing residents. They don't have in-unit laundry, so we feel like we can add another couple of machines.
I was, that was my second point.
Yeah.
In the building that you're doing now, is that on the first floor, you have one washer, one dryer, and there are no in-unit, so I think that needs to increase. Second and third floor have two washers and two dryers. Doesn't seem like a lot for what you're proposing for units.
Noted, I think the idea on the first floor is, is it's half of the, not half, but a large portion of the first floor is amenity space, whereas the upper floors have more units, but point taken.
Yeah, and then, so I was interested in seeing the, the sitting room and the multipurpose room. What is your, wellness room is pretty small, is that gonna be like a, what is that?
So, to clearly define it, you know, to be honest with you, I think it'd be more from our management team. It can be a variety of things these days. It won't be a pickleball court or something like that, but it will be potentially a quiet room, or a room for yoga, or a room for relaxing, I'm not exactly sure. But it was something that we wanted to add as space.
I was gonna say pickleball, so it's interesting that you said that.
Yeah, no, it won't be pickleball, it won't be pickleball. Although indoors would be better, from what I understand, but, yeah.
That's it for me.
That's it, Jimmy.
For the moment.
Jimmy.
I reinforce Mrs. Dubanese's comments about the play area, and commend you for having anticipated it, you know, additional traffic going through that. I'm familiar with the site, some way to encourage youngsters and all ages to not be in the drive-thru area, good with me. I noticed that that's gonna be a flat roof. I'm not opposed to flat roofs, when you showed some pictures, it appeared that there might be some solar panels, or were those rooftop units?
Those were photovoltaic panels, solar panels.
Solar panels?
Yep.
Okay, so there is a thought of putting solar on the roof of the building?
There is.
If you're gonna do solar, and you're gonna be short on trees for the parking lot, how about canopying the parking lot and putting solar out there? I thought, you know, I didn't read an immediate response, but it sure would be something that would be looked upon with favor, I believe. So there's my solar, there's my roof. I'm sure somebody from the community is gonna say, we don't like flat roofs, we think a traditional New England-type roof. I don't care whether it's flat, pointed, bowed, it's a roof, it doesn't leak. The play area, the roof, the solar, you're asking for a waiver on the square footage, exclusive of certain areas. I'd like to know what the real net square footage per unit is gonna be, not including the typically excluded areas, so that when we make our decision, we're making it based on good knowledge.
We can provide that.
And then my final comment is, if you're gonna have solar panels, and you're gonna have a solar canopy over the parking lot, why not put in a few solar charging stations? And then if you really want to take it to the nth degree, plan on having five or six autonomous vehicles, and then your residents don't need to have a car, they can all share autonomous vehicles, and you can charge them extra for the use of that. It sounds silly, but it's the future. And instead of having 40 cars, or 20 cars, or whatever, five cars could service 40 units real nice for senior citizens. And when, you know, Mr. Smith comes home from his dentist appointment, Sally Jones can go to her chiropractor in the same vehicle, and they could be charged right there on-site. So it's just, I know we're years away from it, but I think at least put the infrastructure for it for the future. That's my thought.
Well, just, it's a good point, but in the 2024 IECC, which is the International Energy Conservation Code, EV, electric charging vehicles will be, for this project, will be required. So you will see them as...
That's a step in that direction, there you go.
There's a percentage.
That's my, that's my 25 cents worth.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Connor or something?
Not right now, I'm not, Chris? I know, not right now.
Richard.
Well, just, I know that we do, our town engineer, Allen and Majors, they look over everything as far as the retention ponds and whatnot, but we were just sitting in here, and we saw that there's flooding coming from the, onto the neighbors. You've got neighbors right behind you on that one area, and I don't know where the retention pond, or how you're gonna handle that water, but I would hope that nobody's coming in here afterwards with flooding problems. I appreciate it if it was, something, something was given to me or to the board, securing the fact that we weren't gonna have to worry about this down the road.
Yep.
I mean, I know there's trees and there's grass, and it's gonna eat it up, but there's trees and grass, and this guy's getting flooded out, so I can't predict the future.
I can't say the soils out here are very nice, so it'll infiltrate easily.
They are nice until they're not nice.
And then...
You do want the 25-year storm management, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, those systems are designed to hold the 100-year storm. So they don't, they don't overflow for the 100-year storm. And then, a lot of the big slopes we have on-site, they have depressed areas at the bottom to hold the water, to let it soak into the grass.
All right, all right, that being said, we're gonna go to the public, and I'm sure we'll see you more after.
Have you had a chance to talk? Did we skip Chris?
I'm good.
No, did we skip Chris?
No.
I'm sorry, no.
Anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this project? Favor, in favor, so I hear none, anyone on Zoom in favor, Anthony, John?
John, Anthony?
Not at this time.
All right, that being said, we're gonna start with the neighbors. Who wants to speak first against this project? So, yeah, gentlemen, if you just give two seats, I'll, constantly you can stay, if you wish, if you wish.
Sure, yeah, I can stay.
Have a seat.
My name is Raymond Faye, and I live right beside these apartments, and I know the whole history of the property better than anybody in this room. I've been living there for 85 years now. The drainage problem is, don't exist, blew whatever it was on it, it was all false. All drains on my land, I don't want it there.
Can you put on the retention pond?
Sir, could you clarify, did you say the drainage does not exist, there's no problem, or there is a problem? There is a problem.
I don't want the water drain on my land, it all goes on my land now.
Could you show, could you show a square?
Do we have the clicker?
Right in the...
You're writing that square, okay.
Yeah, right there, it's on my land.
Can you show the drawing with the retention pond?
Hey, thank you.
So, you're talking about the existing condition?
Go back to the...
The existing condition, you're saying there's none there now?
It's on my land.
This is your, this is your site, yes?
Hey, guys.
It's not working, is what I'm saying.
You gotta, you gotta talk through the board, folks.
One other time, only to the board, I have to give you the floor to speak, okay? So let the general, sir, just speak to us, and, sir, don't answer him until I ask you, please, Mr. Engineer, go ahead, sir. So you're saying the water floods to your house?
Oh, yeah, it all goes on my land.
Okay.
I would say the contour goes right through the largest, greenest part. Everything from the green down flows towards my house and Route 28, all of it. Well, there may be a little bit on the back that goes, well, that just percolates in the ground, but... And I would say the watershed, like I say, through the green area goes all to Route 28, and the other one goes to Dotty Street beyond the, the green area.
to Route 28, and the other one goes to Doty Street beyond the, the green area up there. And you probably don't even know about it, but I have a, the Commonwealth of Mass has a drainage inlet on my land, and you probably don't even know about it.
Sir, just don't answer, please.
You never mentioned it.
Let them finish.
So it all goes across my land into the Commonwealth of Mass drainage, the highway drainage. I'm sure the state don't want that water going in there, and it's going to probably be three times more water going in through the state highway, and I'm sure they don't want that.
Okay.
And, let's see what else. And if you ever have to change the radiator, cul-de-sac in there, that building is going to be on top of the, the, the leachin field, it's there now.
Okay.
It's going to encroach on, I'm pretty sure, it's going to encroach on, if you have to move it over.
We can confirm everything.
All right.
And, and that area is going to be all raised up.
Sir, yeah, keep, keep telling me your concerns, and then we'll get the answers. We cannot be chit-chatting with each other. So you have concerns about the building, about the drainage, about the cul-de-sac, what else you have concerns?
Yeah.
Or complaints or whatever.
There's a monitoring well, this is on your.
Okay.
Back, is what is it, two, to monitor the, the leachin field?
You gotta stick with me, sir. Sir, just stick with me.
There's two, I think, monitoring wells behind there.
Okay, so you want us to address it, check them out, something?
I don't know whether they bothered even monitoring to see where the sewage is going. I have, I'm probably the only one on the street with my own well water, and I'm just waiting for, be tasting sewage in my water.
So you have well water, you don't have town?
I don't have it, that's another long story, which I don't want to say. I'm probably the only one, and it's nobody's fault in this room that I have water in my cellar on a wet year like March and April coming up. I don't know whether I had water in there last year or not, I can't remember, but I got a sump pump, my neighbor gets water before I do, he's got all this water going in on my property, so it's compounded the problem in my cellar. It probably would, two feet of water maybe in my cellar if I let it accumulate.
Yeah, the water table is high over there.
Yeah, but it's so flat and level that all the west side, it was a tabletop like this, so the water just sits there, none of it percolates. That's why they want to build it up four feet or whatever, because none of it percolates. And.
What else you have concerns?
Well, like I say, the, well, what I'd be proposing, like I said, if you have to enlarge that, well, regardless, all the water now, from that brown building over there is all going to drain my way, because like I said, I, I went and looked at the area, probably should have got permission Sunday, but I've walked all around the area just to see what the hell's going on, and, but that, that blue area that's parking lot now, every drop of that, not that blue area, show another one with the blue area down below. First picture he showed, I think, no, no, the site plan of the whole thing, right going to Route 28. Yeah, one that one, but you showed a blue area right in the right corner down below, but I don't see it there. And that ain't, is that it? No, no.
So what do you have concerns for that area?
Because they show it as being, as a storage area for water, but every drop of that goes on my land, every drop, and.
Well, we have a, sir, we have our town consultant, he's going to review the plan, and will come back with us and point these issues if it's going to happen. So this is beginning of the process, and we'll have a lot more hearings, and your questions, most of them will be answered, but your water table is not going to be answered.
What I was proposing, now all the environmentalists, they don't want blacktop, that's a sin now, blacktop. Instead of a blacktop driveway there, put crushed stone, I know you don't want to do that, so it percolates. Or put a four-foot diameter pipe all along my property line, 500 feet long, right, it's 500 feet, look where that blue spot is, and, so that it's, it's an underground storage area, like a runoff.
Coltech.
It will be, it will be studied and discussed. I'm sure they'll, they listen to you, our engineers here, the town engineers here, so we'll take this into consideration, we'll, and next time, hopefully next hearing, you'll be here, we'll have some answers. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
We're just gonna give some room for more people to speak, if you don't mind. Are you good, or you want to add some?
Oh, we still.
I mean, the, the room is full of people that want to speak, I'm sure. But you could come back, sir, you could come back, you could, you could speak again, but let's give a chance to everyone before it's midnight, okay?
Oh, yeah.
And you could come back and speak. So next, who would like to speak? Ma'am, come forward, please.
Hello.
Please have a seat, name and address.
Hi, thank you. My name's Adriana Roak, I live at 12 Doty Street.
Yeah.
Actually, could you bring up the map again that we were just looking at?
The other way.
I just have a couple of things. First, I would like.
Just write that address on to me.
Sorry. I'd first like to know what the timeline of this project is, when it's supposed to start, how long it's going to take.
Okay.
I do also have some concerns about drainage and flooding.
Does it affect your property?
I believe it will, if that back area is raised.
How far are you from that?
I'm right to the right of that, the sewer, the.
The septic.
Yeah, the septic tanks.
Okay.
That one, that's my property right there. I'm also curious as to what the plan is to protect the privacy of the neighbors.
Okay, so you have privacy for the neighbors, you have a question about the water, if it goes on your property, and you have the other concern, excuse me, I've been losing my mind lately.
Timeline.
I have so much.
The timeline.
The timeline, it's definitely will be timeline for construction. Anything else you have concern?
Just the fact that I don't want to look out into my backyard and see a parking lot, so I'm heavily advocating for some type of fence or landscape.
Maybe I always recommend, I don't like fences, I recommend, I provide these nice green giants, it doesn't need maintenance, it's pretty, because fences always break.
Yeah, agreed.
And it's more economical for the applicant, believe me, and it's pretty for everybody. Okay, anything else, ma'am?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. I'm sure they took your notes, what you, what your concerns are.
Taking notes and everything.
Yes, come forward, sir, please, sir. Name and address, please.
My name's Ben Hatch, I live at 8 Doty Street. My property abuts Adriana's, who just spoke, and Raymond who spoke, and I just here, I've learned a lot as to what the project really looks like, and, you know, like everybody, I'm concerned about the impact on property values, and, and I suspect that where my property is, is up in the corner between, right there, yes, and, so I appreciate it, all the impact here, appreciate the work of you guys, and just want what's best for all of us. So I'm just looking at my notes here.
It's this hatch.
I don't think there's a lot, I just, like I say, I want what's best for all of us, and the impact on our property values, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm not, I mean, that's on, they're going to have to answer about the values, the impact on the values, but other than, it's a question that next time they're going to have to answer. They have to study it before they give us an answer, unless you have an answer right now.
Not on property values specifically, no.
Okay. Anything else, sir, for right now?
That's it, thank all of you for your service.
Thank you, sir. And like I get, like I said, just for everyone here, whenever we continue this hearing for next time, you will not be notified like the first time, so whatever we say, it's up to you to come, show up or not, if you wish to. You will not be getting those cards again and notices, okay? So we will say the next day, tonight, and it will become up to you for showing up or not, okay? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And you can also find it online at the town, the town site.
Yeah, also online.
When you signed in, I was, your last name's Hatch?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making, I thought I recognized, but I wasn't, I wasn't present when you said your name.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Don't be shy, come up now while he's coming back.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I think the rest of the audience is us.
Okay, I would like everybody to know, when, when, when there's always a 40B project, everybody's, whoa, 40B, it's gonna be, ha, voucher and section Z and all this, not that we discriminate against anyone, but most of these projects, it's based on income, and it's like you have to fit a certain criteria to let you in. Town has assisted with one on Littleton Drive, and they did a, the developer, I forget the name of it, Swift Landing, they did a good job, and, I mean, they go through criterias, they go through file, they, I mean, they, they, it's like giving you firstborn before they give you a unit, they really thorough before they rent in people, so don't think once this place is built, all trouble is in town. It doesn't work with big projects like this. I know I'm sticking up for the developer, but that's how big projects are. They're very careful who they get in there, they don't want their reputation, the place rip, they thorough with the, what do you call it, checks, with the credits or criminal records, all these things, just keep that in mind.
And the older we get, the less trouble we want to cause, so.
Right, so, I mean.
In most cases, in many cases.
That's subjective.
Just the fact that 60, that senior, 62 and older, just this fact, it's, I personally would be at peace, you know, instead of having, the detriment of this 40 units, believe me, it'll be as much as five regular units, so we go, most of us over 50 and 60 here, so we know we don't cause trouble, so. Anyone else would like to speak? All right, we go back to the board, comments for the board.
I think, I think he wants to say something.
Yeah, I'll get, any board comment for the public, no? All right, so go ahead.
I'll, I'll make the comment, it's to reinforce what Nazir was saying. These guys grill them because they got to live with them, once they put them in the unit. If they're bad actors, they got to put up with the bad actors, so if you've got 25, 20, 40 units and two or three bad apples, that means you got 18 people complaining about two, and as a manager, you don't want to hear from those 18 people complaining about two, so you try to prevent that. That's it.
All right, so go ahead.
So I just want to mention to the neighbors' comments that before the next hearing, that we'll, we'll personally meet with each of the neighbors, if they'll allow us, go over the plans in detail and make sure that we're accommodating all their concerns. We don't want to add problems, we want to solve problems, hopefully with the water and everything else. We want this to be something that everybody's proud of, and the other thing is that we're not flying over, dropping something and going away. We'll be on site, we have been on site, and we're, we're in, in town, and we'll remain in town, so, so when things maybe aren't going well, or there is a problem, there's accountability, so I just want to make that public statement.
And just to add also to the people, neighbors, this board, we don't have, 40B is a, it's a funny permit, we're just a mediator, basically, this board, it's not like someone building a house or putting a deck or addition that we could say yes or no. We can say no, but at the end, it goes to the state, and it'll be yes, whether we like it or not, we're more, we're less restriction. So a lot of people always say, oh, why don't you guys say no? It's not that easy to say no, we're not, I know we're the granting authority, but it's our hand that ties when it's 40B.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I just want to, for the neighbors, if I could, because we're all here tonight, if, if someone from NeighborWorks could get your cell numbers or get contact information while we're here.
Once we finish, you guys could go outside and do that.
Thank you.
All right. That being said, Commissioner, you'd like to add anything?
No comment.
No comment. One, one last question.
Yeah.
During your opening presentation, you mentioned that you guys are here in town already, and you are involved with down payments for first-time buyers?
That's correct.
And where would I direct somebody to come pick up a check for down payment so they can go buy a house?
Well, it doesn't work exactly like that, but to answer your question, we provide first-time homebuyer education, we're the largest provider of that in the entire region. We do that online and in person. The closest in-office, in-person office would be Taunton, but we do provide them in a variety of different places around, but it, most of them are online, and the down payment assistance we offer depends on the town where you're buying, but for anywhere and wherem, it would come through Mass Housing. You don't have to go through us to acquire that down payment assistance, but we are the HUD-certified trainer, or educator, that you need to get a certificate from in order to qualify for that down payment, and we're the best at it, so.
That's a great comment, and I know it's like up to 24,000 now.
You can get up to 30,000 with Dreams from Mass Housing and MHB, Mass Housing Partnership.
Thank you.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one last thing, we're not a typical 40B developer. Almost every project that we've completed over the last 30 years has been without 40B, so in this case, it was the most logical, and working with the town to do it this way. But just to say that every, every time we've built a senior development like this, it's, it hasn't been using the 40B vehicle, we actually take pride in what we do, and what we own, and what we manage, and so this isn't like a typical path for us trying to, you know.
You just didn't have enough room.
Just so the stigma attached to 40B, sometimes, you know, it's not, it's not our business practice typically, but it seemed to make the most sense for the use on this site, and it was encouraged when we started discussing the plan originally.
All right, very well. Anyone else want to add anything tonight before everybody goes? All right, when we come in here again?
Two weeks.
Oh, before we go, Phil, did, how, did you have a chance to look at the plans?
No, not yet. We wanted authorization tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, so you need authorization from us to go and look, you're going to need more than two weeks.
I.
Come forward.
Phil Cordero, Allen and Major Associates, I, I understand the applicants are probably aggressive in terms of timeline, but I would suggest we go maybe two meetings out at least to allow us time to conduct the review, would submit it through, through to the applicant, an opportunity to review it, so at least a month.
All right, so I think March 26 is a good date, they'll give you time, he'll give them time to review, he'll give you time to come up with some answers.
Yes, I'll be out of the country, but someone else.
Me too, I'll be out of the country, but I'll be on Zoom.
You'll be on Zoom. I, I will try, but I'm going to be.
Yeah, I'll be out of the country myself, but, so, but the guys are capable here that could handle it, we could go on Zoom, and it's not going to get solved in one, one more meeting anyway. So we, we'll, we'll have to vote.
Make a motion to continue until 3:26, 25?
We need to authorize also Phil to review.
Okay, so moved.
So we have, we need a, we have a motion.
I'll second the continuance.
Okay, go ahead. The motion to continue until the 26.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Yes, she seconded the.
Veronica, a second. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's continued, on authorization for Phil.
So now we're moving to authorize Phil to pick the plans apart and make them miserable.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for the misery. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.